August 30th, 2021 meeting of the Market City Commission is now called to order at 6:00 PM. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, roll call please.
Commissioner Bonzal?
Here.
Commissioner Davis?
Here.
Commissioner Hanley?
Here.
Commissioner Mayor?
Here.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Here.
Mayor Protem Hill?
Here.
And Mayor Smith?
Here.
Commissioners, we have an agenda this evening. Do we have a motion on this agenda? Commissioner Stonehouse?
Motion to approve the agenda as written, Your Honor.
And do we have a second? Commissioner Bonzal?
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please say no. Motion passes seven zero. We have one announcement this evening. Glass recycling will be September 6th through 10th. It's the first full business week of each month. You've probably got one of these handy things in your mail, so stick out your glass in a separate bin. The other recycling will not be collected next week, so no paper, no plastic. All right, that brings us to public comment. Public comments may not exceed three minutes per person. Please note that we do have three public hearings later in the meeting, so if you're here for one of those items, there will be another chance to talk specifically about those in a moment, but this is general public comment. If you would like to make a statement of a general nature, feel free to approach the podium. You have three minutes to speak, name and physical address. Anyone wishing to speak for public comment? I'm just making sure. Okay, seeing none, public comment is closed. We have one presentation tonight by... So that was our public comment session. We will still have three public hearings on specific agenda items. There should be agendas in the back of the room on yellow paper that would tell you which item for the public hearings. All right, moving on to our Board of Zoning Appeals presentation by Chair Jeremy Otteaway. Jeremy, go ahead and approach probably the side podium over here. We'll get the presentation up. And Board of Zoning Appeals, take it away. Thanks, Jeremy.
You guys, Jeremy?
Good. I'll keep it short and sweet. I'm sure the public is not here to hear me talk. This presentation is pretty much the same as we've given the last couple of years for the BZA. As you guys know, the BZA is a quasi-judicial group that basically, well, here's mostly variances. Here's our current membership. Issue 1A, that has kind of been the issue since I've been on the BZA for four or five years now, is getting people off of the BZA and getting new people in. If you look at our dates of appointment there, you have a couple, 2013, 2015, that have long exceeded their expectations, but due to, well, need, they have to kind of stay on and make sure they're a part of the group until we can find adequate replacements. And slowly but surely, we're getting there. We're not there yet, but as you can see, Mr. Vasile has been there since 2013. His term actually expired in 2016. And right now, we have, I think it's a total of three people who are actually holding office until we get successors for them. So if you know anyone, send them our way. We do have a member off the Planning Commission that's there per city charter already. You know, people in the public, if you would like to join the Board of Zoning Appeals, we welcome you, as long as you're a city resident. Little background on 2020. We schedule a meeting every month. It's always the first Thursday of the month. The only time we do have a meeting is when there's an actual need, though, due to either an appeal from the Planning Commission or typically a variance request. Basically, we had three meetings canceled in 2020. Since we've updated our land development code, we've seen that number kind of rise. There's not as much need for variance requests, which is nice. Kind of keeps things short and sweet, especially our meetings are typically 15, 20, 30 minutes, usually one hearing in and out. And typically, the hearings are same thing. Our yard's too small, we need a fence. Yard was already too small before the zoning was in place, so it's one of those things that it's usually pretty easy to handle those types of things. We also meet every once in a while for different types of things like rental codes, so if the fire department has an inspection and there's some sort of appeal with a decision made by them, that can come to us as well. I believe we had one of those last year. As you can see, we had some excused absences. I don't think we've ever had really any unexcused absences since I've been there. We always have quorum, and if we don't, we make sure that we have alternates in place to kind of make sure we have enough people. As you can see, our responsibilities, which I've kind of touched on already, we just kind of follow what has been put in place by the state of Michigan, as well as our land development code. We're there for a reason. We interpret the LDC as well as other administrative orders, requirements, things like that. And like I said, number one, variance requests for things of typically lot size or setback usage, fence requests, things like that. Here are requests in 2020. All of our requests were variances, and I think a lot of that can be attributed to the actual changing of the land development code. We've kind of shifted things by our Planning Commission, which has worked out really well. There's been less of a need to hear things. Every once in a while, we'll get an appeal from the Planning Commission. There hasn't been one, I think, five years maybe, even though one of our decisions is actually being appealed to the circuit court right now. So we'll see how that goes, but that type of thing can happen. Goals for the upcoming year, really, it's the same stuff. We always pursue educational opportunities. It's very important that anyone that's on the Board of Zoning Appeals has a full understanding of the land development code, what the actual need of being on that board is and what our role is in interpreting land development usage, and really just understanding, you know, when to, when not to allow a variance or any type of request to go through. We need to obviously fill vacancies on the board, and as Andrea has put a note here, we have one member that's been on the board for 11 years, so that's kind of where we're at with that. But the way we're pursuing that is, there's a lot more encouragement of word-of-mouth, especially on the board that's there now, than there was even when I started four or five years ago, so that's good. And we've seen a little bit of shuffling in and out because of that, so I'm hoping that continues. But it really does take a special person that has an interest in planning and zoning to actually want to be on the Board of Zoning Appeals, because it's kind of, it's a little dry, but if you enjoy planning, you can be there. Issues and discussions. Once again, Andrea wanted me to touch on fill vacancies on the board. So you see why I'm here. There's a theme, right? So members of the public, as I ask you guys, I think, every year, if you can persuade anyone to join this board to allow the people that have kind of been handcuffed to stay on it for the last few years to have a chance to get off, that would be wonderful. So if you know people that are your neighbors that may have an interest in being on this, send them our way. Questions? That's it. Make it simple for you guys.
Thank you, Jeremy. Nice work. Commissioners, any questions or comments? Commissioner Davis?
Thank you, Jeremy. I just want to express my appreciation for those of you who are serving on this, especially those of you who have fulfilled your terms and remain there and are working to get off of the board. And you have given your appeal, but I would say to the public, don't be afraid of what Jeremy said. It would be a great opportunity to learn more about the city, and I'm sure that you would feel very gratified serving on the committee, so please consider it.
Commissioner Bonzal?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I would second Commissioner Davis's comments. First of all, thanking you, Jeremy, and your fellow BZA members for your service. As you noted, it can be a little dry sometimes, but it's incredibly important. And I agree with Commissioner Davis. I mean, I'm looking at over a dozen people, a dozen members of the public here tonight, who something tells me you're all here because you're concerned about a zoning-related issue for the most part. So that right there, there's a little bit of an overlap in interests. I would encourage all of you to think about, can you spare, as Jeremy was saying, 30, 40 minutes nine, 10 times a year?
Maybe 15 minutes only.
Maybe even only 15 minutes, and all you need is common sense and a copy of the land development code. So I would strongly encourage folks to look into that. It's a really great way to give back to the community and fulfill an important role in the city government that needs to be filled, so thank you.
Other commissioners? Commissioner Stonehouse?
Jeremy, thank you for the presentation, and please pass on to all the board members the great esteem that this commission, I think, holds them in and the work that they do for us. They are a critical cog in city government, and I cannot speak more highly of their efforts, your effort, and what the board as a whole does. And certainly, if anyone is willing to step forward and serve, I think that would be a great position for them to work.
Thank you.
Agreed.
Seeing no other comments. Thank you, Jeremy. I certainly appreciate all the work you do, all of your board members and the staff does, to help you with your important role in the BZA. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Mayor. Commissioners, thank you.
All right, we're moving on to, we've got three public hearings coming up here, the first of which is the rezoning of a portion of 2700 Lake Shore Boulevard. All three of these will require a roll call vote. City Clerk, could we please have the background on item number two on the agenda?
Thank you, Mayor. The Planning Commission held a public hearing on July 20th, 2021, for the consideration of a request for rezoning of a portion of the property located at 2700 Lake Shore Boulevard. This property is the beach received by the City of Marquette from We Energies. The property is currently zoned industrial manufacturing, IM, and is recommended to be rezoned conservation and recreation, CR. The city is requesting this rezoning to match the adjoining public lakeshore and to fit the intended future use of the property, which will be entirely for public enjoyment. After conducting a public hearing, the following motion was made. It was moved by E. Brooks, seconded by A. Andres, and carried four to zero, that after conducting a public hearing and review of the application and staff report for 05-rez-07-21, the Planning Commission finds that the proposed rezoning is consistent with the community master plan and meets the requirements of the Land Development Code Section 54.1405, and hereby recommends that the City Commission approve 05-rez-07-21 as presented. Yes votes were W. Primo, E. Brooks, A. Andres, and M. Larson. There were no no votes. Under procedures in accordance with Section 54.1405 of the Land Development Code, the Planning Commission is offering the recommended amendments to the City Commission for final approval. A hearing must be scheduled in accordance with Section 54.1406 of the Land Development Code. Tonight's hearing was scheduled at the August 8th, 2021 regular city commission meeting. Fiscal effect, none. Recommendation, following the public hearing, adopt ordinance 699, rezoning the referenced portion of 2700 Lake Shore Boulevard as recommended by the Planning Commission, and direct the mayor and city clerk to sign the ordinance. Alternatives, as determined by the commission.
Thank you, City Clerk. Public hearing is now open on the 2700 Lake Shore Boulevard rezoning. Members of the public wishing to make a comment on this have three minutes to do so. Please approach the podium, name and physical address. Going once, going twice. Public hearing is now closed on this item. Commissioners, do we have a motion? Commissioner Hanley?
I motion that we adopt ordinance 699, rezoning the referenced portion of 2700 Lake Shore Boulevard as recommended by the Planning Commission, and direct the mayor and city clerk to sign the ordinance.
And do we have a second? Commissioner Bonzal?
I'll second that motion.
Commissioner Hanley, any discussion?
My only discussion is to say that this is doing exactly what we wanted it to do, which is to make sure that the beach is protected as public use, which is exactly wanted, and will not be used in further industrial uses, which is great, so.
Commissioner Bonzal?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Just wanted to say briefly that, you know, this property, as a reminder for members of the public who might not remember, was acquired at no cost to the city from We Energies, and as, you know, the background information in Commissioner Hanley noted, our intention is to preserve it for recreation and public use, and I really hope that this will be the first step towards a longer-term goal of incorporating some of these properties on the east side of Lake Shore Boulevard into some sort of conservation easement or area to preserve them in the long term.
Any other commissioners? Commissioner Stonehouse?
I would only point out, Your Honor, that the commission is doing exactly what it said it would do in protecting the property. And from day one, there were a few folks out there that were claiming, well, you're going to develop it, you're going to do something like that. In reality, as this commission said, this is what we're going to do, and it's being done tonight. Thank you, Your Honor.
Any other commissioners? I just wanted to add that I think a conservation easement is a good use of this property, and I would agree with Commissioner Stonehouse. This is something that we've long said, that side of the lake is for the public, and we're holding true to that tonight with designation for conservation. All right, City Clerk, could we please have a roll call vote on this item?
Commissioner Bonzal?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Hanley?
Yes.
Commissioner Mayor?
Yes.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hill?
Yes.
And Mayor Smith?
Yes. Motion passes seven zero. Moving on to a second, another public hearing, item number three, rezoning of a portion of 213 South Front Street. Also requires a roll call vote. As a note for the commission, this item is tied to item number six on the agenda, which is unfinished business sale of city property 213 South Front Street. Commissioners, if you have any questions or concerns, now, you know, after the public hearing would be the time to do so, because these items are definitely connected. City Clerk, could we please have the background?
Thank you, Mayor. The Planning Commission held a public hearing on July 20th, 2021, for the consideration of a request for rezoning of a portion of property located at 213 South Front Street. The sale of this property is currently being negotiated by the city manager to Ordoq Real Estate LLC in coordination with the Ordoq Brewing Company LLC, as approved by the City Commission at the regular meeting held on April 26th, 2021. The property is a former railroad grade and is mostly vacant except for a licensed ADA entrance and exit platform and ramp utilized as a rear egress from the Ordoq Brewing Company LLC, and the abutment located next to the building at 214 South Front Street. According to the letter of intent and discussions with the Ordoq Real Estate LLC, they're planning to, quote, "develop the premises into an urban beer garden utilizing a placemaking philosophy to transform this underutilized space into a community asset." The property is currently zoned municipal and will be rezoned to Central Business District to fit the intended commercial use of the property. After conducting a public hearing, the following motion was made. It was moved by E. Brooks, seconded by A. Andres, and carried four to zero, that after conducting a public hearing and review of the application and staff report for 06-rez-07-21, the Planning Commission finds that the proposed rezoning is consistent with the community master plan and meets the requirements of the Land Development Code Section 54.1405, and hereby recommends that the City Commission approve 06-rez-07-21 as presented. Yes votes were W. Primo, E. Brooks, A. Andres, and M. Larson, and there were no no votes. Under procedures in accordance with Section 54.1405 of the Land Development Code, the Planning Commission is offering the recommended amendments to the City Commission for final approval. A hearing must be scheduled in accordance with Section 54.1406 of the Land Development Code. This hearing was scheduled at the August 8th, 2021 regular city commission meeting. The rezoning of this parcel will be contingent on the sale of the parcel to Ordoq Real Estate LLC, and that item will be considered by the City Commission at this meeting in conjunction with the rezoning request. The rezoning request should only be approved if the property sale is also approved. Fiscal effect, none. Recommendation, following the public hearing, adopt ordinance 700, rezoning the portion of 213 South Front Street as recommended by the Planning Commission, and direct the mayor and city clerk to sign the ordinance. Alternatives, as determined by the commission.
Thank you, City Clerk. The public hearing on this item, the rezoning of 213 South Front Street, is now open. Members of the public wishing to make a comment on this item have three minutes. Please state your name and physical address. Go ahead and approach All right, last chance. Public hearing is now closed. Commissioners, do we have a motion? Mayor Protem Hill?
I move that we adopt ordinance 700, rezoning the portion of 213 South Front Street as recommended by the Planning Commission, and direct the mayor and city clerk to sign the ordinance.
Do we have a second? Commissioner Stonehouse?
I'd like to have the distinct honor to second this motion.
Any discussion? Protem Hill?
I strongly support this project and the sale of the property. I think it's going to become a tremendous asset for the community, and I thank you for doing the work that there's... This is the continued transformation of an area from the railroad, but there's going to be echoes and themes of the railroad as we're going forward, and it really looks terrific, and I'm excited for the opportunity. Thank you.
Commissioner Stonehouse, any discussion?
Your Honor, I can only mention that the property in question is really disused property, so it's an asset to the city to be able to see it in productive use. And I could also indicate that certainly the purchases of the property and the people that will be developing it have certainly demonstrated an admirable, admirable, admirable ability to remake that small portion of this used Marquette to all of our advantage. So I wish them every piece of luck as they go forward.
Any other commissioners? All right, seeing no additional discussions. City Clerk, could we please have a roll call vote?
Commissioner Bonzal?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Hanley?
Yes.
Commissioner Mayor?
Yes.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hill?
Yes.
And Mayor Smith?
Yes. Motion passes seven zero. Now we are on item number four, rezoning of 301 West Barriga Avenue. City Clerk, could we please have the background?
Thank you, Mayor. The Planning Commission held a public hearing on July 6th, 2021, for the consideration of a request for rezoning of the property at 301 Barriga Avenue from medium-density residential to multiple-family residential. After conducting a public hearing, the following motion was made. It was moved by S. Mittelfelt, seconded by M. Larson, and carried three to two, that after conducting a public hearing and review of the application and staff report for 04-rez-07-21, the Planning Commission finds that the proposed rezoning is consistent with the community master plan and meets the requirements of the Land Development Code Section 54.1405, and hereby recommends that the City Commission approve 04-rez-07-21. Yes votes were from S. Mittelfelt, M. Larson, and J. Cardillo. No votes from W. Primo and E. Brooks. Under procedures in accordance with Section 54.1405 of the Land Development Code, the Planning Commission is offering the recommendation to approve the request to the City Commission for consideration. A hearing should now be conducted in accordance with Section 54.1405 of the Land Development Code. Fiscal effect, none. Recommendation, following the public hearing, adopt ordinance 701, rezoning 301 West Barriga Avenue as recommended by the Planning Commission, and direct the mayor and city clerk to sign the ordinance. Alternatives, as determined by the commission.
Thank you. Public hearing on 301 West Barriga Avenue rezoning is now open. Members of the public wishing to speak have three minutes to do so. Please state your name and physical address.
Kyle Rambo, and I'm located at 900 Orianna. But I work just down the road here at 347 Rock Street with Catholic Social Services, and I'm representing the Catholic Diocese of Marquette. We want to drive on with this request to rezone this property to represent what it's really being used for, and it's been used for, at least for religious services for over a century, and for the six apartments that are attached to this complex that have been occupied either by visiting priests or retired priests and even a retired bishop for the past 15 years plus. In addition to the expansive resident, which is currently vacant, this entire complex, for that reason, should be rezoned to be more in compliant with the city master plan. I will say also that we had fully intended to establish a women's recovery house at this location, and unfortunately, we have decided to look outside the city and in other cities in the UP to provide these critically important services. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Mary Buckmaster. I now live at 108 Palm Street after living 50 years on Rock Street. I went to the Planning Commission meeting, and I did some research after. The first question I want to talk about is, is that an appropriate location for a multifamily residential zone? And I say no, because the Father Marquette Catholic Academy is right across the street from 300 Rock Street, and the medium-density residential surrounds it. Two, are the uses permitted in the existing zone reasonable? Yes. Religious institutions are already a special land use. 300 Rock Street was built in 1932 for a bishop's apartment... 300 Rock Street was built in 1932 for a bishop's apartment and diocese and offices. St. Peter's Cathedral is the mother church of the dioceses. The staff analysis number five, in quotation marks, said, "If there were 11 apartments in the building at the corner of Rock and Fourth Street, if utilized, would constitute a multifamily situation, use situation." I can't think why there would be 10 apartments that the bishop would have next to him. Three, would the rezoning be consistent with the other zones and land uses in the area? The 200 block of Barriga Avenue across the street from the county sheriff's department and the county courthouse complex is zoned multifamily residential. However, the homes from the fire department on Rock Street to Seventh Street, homes on the 500 block of the, the Fourth Street, 300 block of Fisher Street, and the 400 and 500 block of Fifth Street are all zoned medium density residential. Four, is the proposed rezoning consistent with the trend of development in the area? No, this area has stayed the same for a very long time. The school is the most recent development, and that was completed in 1958. Are the uses in the proposed zone equally or better suited to the area and current uses? Well, now in multifamily, special land uses include adult foster care large group home, a bed and breakfast, domestic violence abuse center, fraternity or sorority house, halfway house, and a rooming house. Are these really appropriate right across from a pre-k to eighth grade school? All the schools have traffic and parking issues, both during the school day and, and school and evening activities. St. Peter's Cathedral has masses, funerals, special events, and concerts that bring traffic and parking to the issues. The staff review analysis stated that the Rock Street traffic is low and the traffic on Fourth Street is moderate. That may be the case at certain times in day or night, but not all the time. Is this consistent with the master plan? The proposed future zoning shows 301 West Barriga Avenue Medium Density Residential. That's the proposed. The master plan alluded to problems that may occur when multifamily residential districts is located in a medium density residential district. It did not address the problems that could occur with a school right across the street. The next question, is the proposed use compatible with uses in the district?
Thank you, Ms. Buckmaster, that was three minutes. Anyone else for the public hearing on 301 West Barriga Avenue?
Jerry Recmanix, I reside at 607 Menard Street. I have property of 346, 348 Rock Street, which are apartment buildings. My concern is, when we went to the planning meeting last month, was that letters were sent out to, within 300 feet of the address. Well, from that point on, there's like only about maybe five, six houses going to the west, maybe a couple houses going to the east. And the comment was, that was made to us, nobody showed up at the meeting. And my, my question is, should, or maybe we should have more time with this, because I feel that the parishioners of the cathedral weren't informed, nor were the parents of the kids that would go to Bishop Barriga School. You know, I feel that they should have a say in this, too. Now, whether I'm right or wrong, that's beside the point. But also, I don't think it's in that, should not be a rehab in this area, even though there's other things, because we have other places in this town, like the old hospital that could be used for things like that. We don't need any other places like the hotspots of Grandview Apartments or Room at the Inn, which the police are there, they're hot, the places that they're called there quite often. They can have a, a letter stating that we're going to do this, and we're going to do that, and that, but when it really comes down to doing it, there's really, I feel there's never really a follow-up in this. Because when it comes to the real acid test, what do you want? Thank you.
Anyone else for the public hearing? Got three minutes, name and physical address, please.
Good evening. I'm Mauresti Herkins. I reside at 342 Rock Street with my wife Patricia, and I also have been given the okay to represent my elderly neighbor, Robert Dutmer, at 336 Rock Street, who can't be here because of age and health. Make it short. I just feel of the best interest in the neighborhood in the long run. I don't see this would be beneficial for it. That's all I got to say. Thank you very much.
Anyone else for the public hearing? Three minutes, name and physical address. Going once, going twice. Public hearing is now closed. All right, commissioners, do we have a motion on this item? Commissioner, Mayor Protem Hill?
I move that we postpone this item to a future, the decision on this meeting to, excuse me, I move that we postpone a decision on this item to a future meeting.
And do we have a second on that motion? Commissioner Davis?
I'll second the motion.
Commissioner, or Mayor Protem Hill, any discussion on this item?
I would like to ask the city manager to please update us on the, on the process.
Certainly. Just a bit of background, I did receive several calls with some of the, the new information we just heard prior to the public hearing, no, right at the beginning of the public hearing, actually, about the intended use, which originally was for a women's recovery center, halfway house, and that has since changed, and obviously, we heard this before us. Now, that doesn't change the request, that's still open right now. The diocese has not withdrawn their request, and so the, the public hearing did proceed for it, as we saw. But there's still, there's still work to be done and some investigating to be done at the commission's request here. And if the diocese does proceed with their original intent, which was a halfway house, there still needs to be another step. There actually still needs to have a separate, separate approval process, which includes a public hearing held at the public, the Planning Commission meeting in order to have that special land use approved. So this is simply one step of that. But at this point, they have not really clearly stated what their, their intention is other than to continue using it as housing for visiting priests and the like.
Thank you, Karen. Protem Hill, any additional discussion on this item?
No, just, I think, right, with the change of use, we want to have further discussions, and so we are going to postpone. I hope that's, that's clear.
And Commissioner Davis?
Yes, I want to thank those of you that are here, the audience, and the 51 people that signed a petition. I think we just had a demonstration of the power of a community, or of at least a neighborhood. I applaud Catholic Social Services for searching for a place to have this service, because it's a very much service that's needed in the area. There are some things that were, that have been presented to us that just would indicate we need to, a little more time on this. I've heard a house with eight bedrooms, I've, plus three apartments, I've heard 11 apartments, I've heard five additional apartments, and so some of this just needs to be put together in a more organized way and presented to us with some more thought.
Any other discussion from the commission? Commissioner Stonehouse?
Your Honor, I don't, I will not be supporting this motion. I think we have sufficient data in front of us now to make a decision. I don't think any further discussion is going to clarify anything. The folks that live in the neighborhood, the residents, have been very clear in telling us tonight what they think. We've had petitions, I've had, I've seen seven or eight or nine, I think, different letters of correspondence that were available within the Planning Commission document. I have had, not had a single resident speak in favor of the, the rezoning of that property. So I see no particular reason that we should take more time to go through something, which is frankly, the clearest I've seen in a very long time.
Mr. Bonzal?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I understand Commissioner Stonehouse's concerns, and honestly, I was thinking along similar lines initially, but I think that we really can't make a decision, a well-informed decision on this proposed rezoning without knowing what the actual practical implications of it are going to be. I mean, as, as some people have noted, there are many different potential land uses in the multifamily residential district, and we need to know exactly what the property's going to be used for. Of course, we need to keep in mind that in the future, you know, theoretically, any of those land uses could be developed at that property if we rezone it, but I think we need to know in the short term, the short to medium term, what the actual impact is going to be. So I will support Mayor Protem Hill's motion.
Any other discussion? Commissioner Mayor?
Thank you, Your Honor. More of a question for our city manager here. Correct me if I'm wrong, the area that they're currently using, even without the recovery center being part of this, needed to be rezoned, correct?
Correct, it's currently non-conforming.
Okay. And even if we did approve the rezoning for what they currently have, like you just stated, we would still have to approve a separate item for recovery center if they decided to go that route?
If they proceeded with a recovery center.
Okay.
And that was just, one point for a request for clarification as well is, if, if the commission's asking for staff to go back and do the investigation and bring back at the next meeting or at a certain date that you had in mind, just a point of clarification would be great.
Okay.
Thank you, that's all I had.
Sure. Protem Hill, are you comfortable making an amendment on the motion for, as requested by the city manager?
I, I will, since, the, the communication was with staff, so I actually, I wouldn't want to presume to know the date, as I think is appropriate, the communication was with staff. So are you, are, are you comfortable with the next meeting, or would you prefer to say the end of next month?
Next meeting would be just fine.
Okay. I will, I will amend the motion. I can, so I, I amend the motion to state that I move that we postpone the decision on this item to the first meeting in September in 2021.
Okay. Do we have a second on that motion, amendment?
I'm good with that, yes.
Okay. Commissioner Davis? All right, so let's go ahead and take a vote on just the amendment to start. Oh, we have to do a roll call, is that right? Or do we not need to, because this isn't the actual? Okay. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please say no.
No.
So we've got, motion passes five to two. And now we will go ahead and take a vote on the entire motion. All in favor, please say yes.
Your Honor, comment before vote?
Sure, you had a chance already, but go ahead, Commissioner Stonehouse?
Thank you very much. I think one thing that was exposed with this process, and one of the speakers actually, I think, did speak to it, is that the city did a very poor job of notifying neighbors. Simply going out 900 or 300 feet is, is really not getting the job done. I think when we have a change like this, a rezoning of a large piece of public property, we need to make the effort to be far more expansive than that. And I think by not notifying or the, assuring that the user groups in that area are also notified, which in this case, which should be the parishioners of the church, and certainly should be the parents that are using Father Marquette's school, all of those groups have a stake in that particular area of Marquette, and should have been well notified of what the intention was. Now that they weren't, does not speak well, perhaps, to the process that we've gone through. But I think from an LDC side, we need to revamp that to assure that we do have adequate notification going out to all parties when we have this type of an issue. Simply relying it as, as a piece put in the Mining Journal clearly does not get the job done. We understand that the newspaper is slowly getting less and less of itself, and how we process and get notifications out, I'm not telling you how to do that. I'm only telling you that we need to do a much better job than we have done. Thank you for the time, Your Honor.
All right, let's go ahead and take a vote. And the motion is the entire motion to push this to a future meeting, which is designated as the first meeting in September. All in favor? Oh, go ahead, Protem Hill? Did I say that wrong?
Well, I just, I, I, I have a concern that it's not the city's responsibility to speak for the entities in a sale. And so, while I think it's important that we, we, we just meet our, absolutely meet our obligations regarding who, those approximate to, and, but for us to reach inside an institution is not our, is not the role of government, and I think that's, that greatly concerns me. And I think that we can encourage the institutions, but we cannot speak for the institutions. So I think that is why we want to move forward, that's why we want to take our time. That's why we want to pause. So we are letting the institutions play, communicate to their entities, but it is not the role of government to speak inside the institution, speak for the institution or to go inside the institution. I want to be clear about what this emotion is and what the amendment is.
Okay. All in favor, please say yes. I asked City Clerk already, and he said no to a roll call vote, because the motion is different than what was proposed. All in favor, please say yes.
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 All opposed, please say no.
No.
Motion passes five to two.
End of the Valley of Death, ruled six hundred.
Item number five, consent agenda. Commissioners, do we have a motion on consent? Commissioner Hanley?
I motion that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Do we have a second? Commissioner Davis?
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say yes.
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 All opposed, please say no. Motion passes seven zero. Item number six, unfinished business sale of city property 213 South Front Street. This does require a roll call vote. As I mentioned previously, this is tied to item number three, the rezoning of a portion of 213 South Front Street. So we've already discussed this property use, but now this is the sale of the city property. City Clerk, could we please have the background?
Thank you, Mayor. In March 2021, representatives from Ordoq Real Estate LLC, in coordination with the Ordoq Brewing Company LLC, approached the city manager's office with a purchase request for a portion of a parcel of vacant city-owned land located at 213 South Front Street. The property is a former railroad grade and is mostly vacant except for a licensed ADA entrance and exit platform, and a ramp utilized as a rear egress from Ordoq Brewing Company LLC, and an abutment located next to the building at 214 South Front Street. According to the letter of intent and discussions with the Ordoq Real Estate LLC, they are planning to, quote, "develop the premises into an urban beer garden utilizing a placemaking philosophy to transform this underutilized space into a community asset." The aforementioned abutment was not initially included in the purchase request, but this has been included following the recent sale of 214 South Front Street to Ordoq Real Estate LLC. As part of the negotiation process and at the city's request, Ordoq Real Estate LLC provided a survey and appraisal of the property. Due to challenges presented by the nature of the current uses of the property for infrastructure and stormwater management, the appraisal was split into two parcels, A and B. Parcel A, bordering Front Street, measures approximately 0.2 acres and appraised for $31,000. Parcel B, the remaining portion of the property, measures approximately 0.18 acres and appraised for $12,000. Both appraisals were performed by Appraisal Associates of Marquette. Neither parcel A nor B are considered buildable land due to various easements and existing utility infrastructure that will remain after the sale. Parcel B especially would have difficulties related to future usage due to the utility infrastructure and stormwater management considerations on adjacent sites. Accordingly, the city manager is recommending the sale of parcel A for 100% of the appraised value, $31,000, and parcel B for 80% of the appraised value, $9,600, for a total price of $40,600 for the entire parcel. Fiscal effect, upon the final approval of the sale, the city will receive $40,600 in revenue. Recommendation, approve the attached resolution of sale and purchase agreement, and authorize the city manager to complete the sale of city-owned vacant property located at 213 South Front Street for a total of $40,600. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you, City Clerk. Commissioners, do we have a motion? Commissioner Hanley?
I motion that we approve the attached resolution of sale and purchase agreement, and authorize the city manager to complete the sale of city-owned vacant property located at 213 South Front Street for a total of $40,600.
Do we have a second? Commissioner Stonehouse?
Your Honor, I second that motion.
Mr. Hanley, any discussion?
Just to say that, as we've discussed in the previous public hearing, I think this is a fantastic thing for the city. It's going to be wonderful when it's done, and I look forward to seeing you guys build this out.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Your Honor, I've said a bunch of good things before, I would just say ditto to those. Thank you.
Any additional discussion, commissioners? I would just like to add that I hope you have a ribbon cutting for this property. Not that I expect you to buy my beer, I buy my own beer, but I want to be there, okay? I expect an invitation. All right, let's go ahead and take a vote. This does require a roll call vote. City Clerk?
Commissioner Bonzal?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Hanley?
Yes.
Commissioner Mayor?
Yes.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Hill?
Yes.
And Mayor Smith?
Yes. Motion passes seven zero. Congratulations. Item number seven, lobbyist contract under new business. City Clerk, could we please have the background?
Thank you, Mayor. In August 2020, the city of Marquette entered into a two-year agreement with Karube Associates for lobbying services at a cost of $3,000 per month. Per the terms of the agreement, either party can terminate the contract upon 30 days' written notice. Due to budgetary constraints, the city manager is recommending the immediate termination of this contract. Fiscal effect, the city of Marquette will save $3,000 per month by terminating this contract. Recommendation, terminate the agreement between Karube Associates and the city of Marquette and authorize the city manager to provide written notice of the termination per the terms of the contract. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you, City Clerk. Do we have a motion on this item, commissioners? Lobbyist contract. Anyone want to take this on? Commissioner Mayor?
Your Honor, I move to terminate the agreement between, thank you, Karube Associates and the city of Marquette and authorize the city manager to provide written notice of the termination per the terms of the contract.
Do we have a second on this motion? Commissioner Bonzal?
I'll second that motion.
Commissioner Mayor, any discussion?
You know, I think we discussed this a little bit at our last special budget meeting as a possible item. Looking at this right now, I don't think we are getting as much use out of a lobbyist as we could be. If the commission wanted to be more active in state legislation and weighing in on policy, I could see a use for it, but as of right now, I just don't see us getting our money's worth out of it.
Mr. Bonzal?
Yeah, I tend to agree, and I just think that, look, it's not that we don't get any use out of having a lobbyist representing our interest in Lansing, but I think oftentimes in the issues that we're working on, it's sort of a David versus Goliath situation, regardless of whether we have somebody being paid on retainer to help us out, and as we saw with the short-term rental issue, for example. And we need to make tough decisions. It's a tough budget year. It's kind of the reality that we're in, so I support this.
Other commissioners, any discussion? Commissioner Davis?
Well, I actually do feel that we get benefit out of having a lobbyist in Lansing, but I also understand the need to be more prudent in our upcoming fiscal year, so we'll support this motion.
Commissioner Hanley?
I agree with what everyone has said so far. I think that right now, with our budget, the way it is, this is prudent, is prudent exactly to take it off of and not use it, but I do also think that in the future, when we are in a better standing, re, maybe reopening the contract would be the way to go, because we do need someone that's fighting for things like making sure we're getting more money for our roads, which is the biggest problem we have here. And right now, as it's set up in this state, it doesn't work, so having someone that could lobby on our behalf for that would be wonderful, but right now, I think it's better that we don't use it.
Other commissioners, anything to add? All right, seeing no additional discussion, let's go ahead and take a vote. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please say no. Motion passes seven zero. Item number eight, delegate for the Michigan Municipal League Convention. City Clerk, could you please read the background?
Thank you, Mayor. Each year, the Michigan Municipal League holds a meeting of its members, which includes the election of trustees, voting on policy issues and other business. In accordance with Michigan Municipal League's bylaws, each member municipality is asked to appoint one official voting delegate to represent the municipality at this annual meeting. The Michigan Municipal League Annual Meeting will take place in Grand Rapids, September 22nd through the 24th, 2021. Fiscal effect, none by this action. Recommendation, authorize the mayor to appoint one city delegate to attend the 2021 Michigan Municipal League Annual Meeting. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you. Commissioners, do we have a motion? Commissioner Mayor?
Thank you, Your Honor. I authorize to move the mayor to appoint one city delegate to attend the 2021 City Municipal League Annual Meeting.
And do we have a second on this item? Commissioner Hanley?
I second that.
Any discussion on this item?
None from me, Your Honor.
Kind of thinking that might be the case. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please say no. Motion passes seven zero. And as a note, both Mayor Pro Tem Hill and Commissioner Davis will be attending the MML Convention, and I will be appointing Pro Tem Hill to ask as our, act as our delegate. Thank you, Pro Tem Hill. Appreciate it. Item number nine, city manager and city attorney performance evaluation process. City Clerk, could we please have the background on this one?
Thank you, Mayor. The city charter requires the city commission to conduct an annual performance review of both the city manager and the city attorney. In past years, the mayor has appointed three commissioners to serve on a committee to review and compile the city managers' and city attorneys' performance evaluations and make a recommendation regarding any adjustment to the manager's compensation or terms of employment. According to her employment contract, this first evaluation period should be used for the city commission, together with Ms. Kovacs, to develop goals and objectives for her initial year of employment. Fiscal effect, none by this action. Recommendation, appoint three commissioners to serve on a committee to review and compile the city managers' and city attorneys' performance evaluations and develop goals and objectives for the city manager's initial year of employment. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you, City Clerk. Commissioners, do we have a motion? Commissioner Davis?
I move that we appoint three commissioners to serve on a committee to review and compile the city managers' and city attorneys' performance evaluations and to develop goals and objectives for the city manager's initial year of employment.
And do we have a second? Mayor Pro Tem Hill?
I second the motion.
Commissioner Davis, any discussion?
No discussion.
Pro Tem Hill, any discussion?
No. I appreciate that we are meeting charter obligations and that folks are being willing to step, at just beginning, but are stepping up to be part of this process, that we can have a good one going forward. Thank you.
Any other commissioners? All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please say no. Motion passes seven zero. And as a note on this committee, I will be actually appointing myself, which I don't typically do on a committee, but I feel like my experience in human resources and having served on this committee for three years prior would be a good use of my time. I will be appointing Commissioner Stonehouse to join me, who has also served with me for at least that long, if not longer, and we will be having Commissioner Hanley join us as well. She expressed an interest, and we're glad to have someone newer on the committee. Just wanted to inform the commission and the public of that. All right, moving on to item number 10, the supervisors' labor agreement. City Clerk, background, please.
Thank you, Mayor. The city of Marquette has reached a new five-year agreement with the supervisory employees' chapter of Ask Me Local 1825. The bargaining unit has ratified the agreement. The main issue during negotiations was wages. The parties have agreed to offer a competitive wage and health insurance package. The city's bargaining team commends the supervisory unit of Ask Me for their willingness to work with us to negotiate an agreement that is fair to the employees and to the city. The fiscal effect of the agreement, it includes a 3% raise for each of the five years, and marks a total increase of $86,452.48 over that five-year period. The recommendation, approve the supervisory employees' labor agreement effective October 1, 2021 through September 30, 2026, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign the agreement. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you, City Clerk. Commissioners, do we have a motion on this item? Commissioner Mayor?
Thank you, Your Honor. I move to approve the supervisory employment labor agreement effective October 1, 2021 through September 30, 2026, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign the agreement.
Okay, and do we have a second on that motion? Commissioner Bonzal?
I'll second the motion.
Commissioner Mayor, any discussion?
Just want to say I'm glad that we have an agreement that we can all agree with and that there is actually a wage increase for them, which I personally prefer, but...
Commissioner Bonzal?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I agree, the contract seems fair, and I'm glad that we were able to come to an agreement. However, I just had a quick question for the city manager. How many employees, city employees, will be impacted by this contract agreement?
I believe there are eight within this, within this union.
Okay, great. So we're talking about an $86,000 increase over five years, divided between eight people.
Yes.
So, you know, I'm glad we were able to come to an agreement, and I think that this is fiscally responsible by the city, and I'm glad that we were able to, you know, given the budget concerns that we have right now, I'm glad we were able to come to an agreement that does have a negotiated wage increase, but that's within the means of the city government.
Mr. Hanley?
I hate to say that I don't agree with giving this at this point, but I don't. I want to give raises to everyone in the city, but I look at this, and I know that this was bargained out, I believe, in June, that this contract was done before we knew of the city's fiscal standing, and I worry about doing a five-year contract right now. I wish we could go back and do a one-to-whatever-the-city-deems-right-year contract and then renegotiate with them to get them more when we're on a better standing. My biggest fear is, well, this is only an $86,000 thing for eight things. Do we have four other open union contracts right now?
We have several other.
Yeah, that are much larger than eight, and this will set a precedent that we have to give that when we don't have the money to give that to everyone, and it scares me. I think that doing a five-year contract right now is a very scary thing when we don't know the standing of this city at this point.
Other commissioners? Commissioner Davis?
Okay, thank you. You know, I want to acknowledge the work that was done on the negotiating committee on both sides of the table for contract recommendation, and these discussions are not always easy and oftentimes difficult. And unions have a very significant part of our nation's history and are a very important part of our workforce. I would love to be able to vote favorably on this contract. You know, unfortunately, I feel as Commissioner Hanley does, our city is not in a position to be able to afford this cost in these difficult times. It's a very generous contract that provides 3% annual increase over five years. The cost is not only in the salaries, the increase also affects the cost of pensions, vacation, payouts, and sets the stage for our other contract negotiations that are coming up. I'm concerned that if we approve this contract, it will financially stress the city budget even more, and, you know, it could easily affect the number of employees that we are able to support in the future. You know, I understand this contract was negotiated prior to the recognition of our financial constraints, and now that we know their financial situation, I would love to see that the parties go back to the bargaining table and seek a solution that will allow us to continue to employ the same number of people in our workforce that we can continue the same services that we have within our city.
Pro Tem Hill?
I agree with everything that Commissioner Davis just said. It is a very difficult situation to be in, looking ahead five years, given our current situation with the revenue shortfalls that we have. And in particular, I'm interested in that we're going to be looking at different ways that revenue could be coming in. There's going to be potentially federal money coming in that we just don't know yet, and so I feel like committing to five years at this time is just not the most prudent thing, and that this was negotiated several months ago when we didn't really understand everything that was in front of us. And so it is, but I absolutely support unions. I do agree, again, that we need to have bargaining units that will work collectively with the administration to find the best way to serve our, to make sure that our personnel are compensated fairly, but it is a timing issue that is most unfortunate, and I look forward to seeing what the next conversations will bring forward that will allow us, as Commissioner Davis said so well, to continue to offer the services we have with the personnel that we have.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Your Honor, normally, I think I would be certainly supporting this particular proposal, but the ground has shifted, and the economic ground has shifted, and it's shifted well over this last six months, that I don't think that the commission, the city, can afford to have this contract. And the reasons have been said before, I'll repeat just a couple of them, is that this is precedent-setting, and as the next bargaining units come into the arena to bargain out the best that we can with them, it's going to point to the 3% per year and quite honestly expect at least the same treatment. When I checked the papers today, I think the CPI was somewhere around 1.2, 1.3, maybe 1.4. So that's the better measure of what the percentile wage increase would normally be, that we try to build in and maybe a little bit above that, with 3%, and especially over five years. I don't believe that is prudent for the city of Marquette, nor is it really prudent for the workforce in the city. As I recall, when we were going through the budget ramifications, and still are, one of the commitments the commission made was to keep all the employees working, that everybody would stay aboard as we went through this rough spot, and doing a contract like this would make that an exceedingly difficult pledge to actually hold up to, simply because there's only so much in the pot, and how we'll be able to make that fairly distributed, I think, would be probably impossible. So thank you for the time, Your Honor.
Thank you, Commissioner Stonehouse.
Let me just add that personally, this is a very difficult vote for me for a lot of reasons, so I hope folks understand that this is not something easily done. Thank you.
Certainly. Any other comments from the commission? Commissioner Hanley?
I just had a question for city staff. So just looking at this 3%, it says 86,000 plus is the fiscal effect, but does that include any possible overtime? And do we know how much overtime is averaged between these?
This is the base wage calculation at this point, that is the constant. Do we have those figures readily available for overtime?
The supervisor group, like Karen said, has eight, eight individuals in it. They are on an on-call schedule, so one supervisor is on-call for a full week in rotation. The two supervisors at the plants, the water and wastewater plants, do not participate in the on-call schedule, but this figure, the annual figure, does include that overtime.
Okay.
I didn't include overtime as far as other, other emergencies that come up throughout the year, because we did talk about in the budget hearing, using limiting overtime as our strategy to help save money, so.
Awesome, thank you. So everybody understands that that includes base wages, but the scheduled normal overtime, none of the variable that is a little bit more in our control.
Awesome, thank you. And then the only other thing I want to point out is I want to second what I think every commissioner on this board has said, which, I come from a union family. I believe in unions wholeheartedly. They are the backbone of what we have in this, and I fully believe that we should give people raises that can help them grow. A lot of the city staff has been working without a raise for multiple years at this point. I just worry about extending out a five-year contract at this point when we don't know where we're standing is the only holdback that I have at this point.
Mr. Bonzal?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I certainly understand and respect the concerns that some of my colleagues have about this contract, but, I mean, I'm looking right now at bls.gov, Bureau Labor Services. The Consumer Price Index for all consumers rose 5.4% over the last 12 months, not seasonally adjusted, minus food and energy that increased over the past year was 4.3%. So given the current rate of inflation, really 3% isn't even meeting the rate of inflation, which has increased recently. I also grew up in a union household. In fact, one of my parents worked for the city of Marquette for about 30 years, and while in general she really enjoyed working here, I know for a fact that her and my father, who is also a municipal or a county employee, it was disheartening and disillusioning at times to have wage increases that didn't even keep pace with inflation year after year after year. And we've had several contracts that have been negotiated recently that have minimal or zero wage increases. So I'm not entirely convinced that this one contract, which affects eight employees, is setting a precedent in the way that some people think, seem to think it is, given that context of contracts that we've approved over the last couple of years. And so for that reason, I still think that it makes sense to approve the negotiated agreement that the city and its employees came to.
Commissioner Mayor?
Thank you, Your Honor. And thank you, Commissioner Bonzal, for that. Karen, I have a question, I guess. Is, this was back in June, this was negotiated?
Yes.
Were these figures already factored into our budget that we've been discussing? Were these figures already factored into our budget that we've been discussing?
I don't know, I cannot confirm for certain if those were all in there. I'm seeing nodding yes, yes, so three, yes. But, you know, the intention really, on this part, was not to, we were holding off on some of this in order to complete some of our other negotiations. But we are here, we're obligated to bring this in front of you as it is.
Sure, okay, thank you. You know, I just want to add with this that I really don't think it's a precedent-setting thing. I think every single agreement is different. What's been negotiated previous years, what's being negotiated by the teams, they're all different. They're case-by-case basis. I understand the concept of, that it could be setting precedents, but I don't think this is really going to be doing that. I also don't think it's an unreasonable agreement by any means either. Unpopular thought going through my head, at least unpopular with some of my colleagues here. You know, it seems like everyone's wanting to be in favor of employees and in favor of unions until it actually comes down to the cost of it. And that's really what I'm struggling with, is looking at this as, you know, all of us want, I think, I don't, definitely a majority of us have said that we would approve this if we weren't worried about the cost. And in a labor market like we have right now, I want us to focus on retaining the amazing employees that we have. And as Commissioner Bonzel brought up, I believe, if I'm remembering correctly, just in the last quarter, inflation has increased by almost 5% in a single quarter. That's just, I don't even have words for that, as far as how that affects individual families, but. Thank you.
So I've got several thoughts. I'll finally chime in, I've been waiting. To chime in on what you just said, Commissioner Mayor, I'll make a clear distinction. I don't have an issue with 3% at all. I don't think that's unfair. I have an issue with five years. Compounding, legacy costs, potential overtime costs. And it's not like, you know, I know these people do hard work and they are fantastic. But we need to be able to talk about, in year two, year three, year four, year five, if things are catastrophic with our budget, that we say, you know what, here's some extra time off. You know what, here's some other perks that we can come up with. If we don't have the money, that's all can be negotiated. So I would be more in favor of a shorter contract. Not something I want to work into a motion at all. But I think with our financial situation as it stands, looking at a $4 million deficit in a real murky future in year two and year three, we don't have a clear out for this financial situation. As someone who has negotiated five union contracts for five and a half years, precedent-setting is real, 100%. Until you've done that, it's hard to know. But everyone wants the same deal, or very similar, to what everyone else has. And you can't get around that very easily. So that's why I really cannot support a five-year deal at 3%. Not because I don't think they do great work, but because I want to make sure that, you know, some of the bigger groups, 3% for five years is going to be a whole lot more than $86,000. Couple other thoughts. I already covered most of these. I wrote them all down because there were so many. So, the contract was negotiated prior to the discovery of a financial issue. So I don't, I think that both sides of this negotiation team did the best they could with the information that they had at the time, and I applaud them for that work. And I hope that you understand that this is really difficult for us as a commission. This is not an easy punt back. We don't want to do it. But I think that if we're able to come to a shorter-term agreement or some kind of other agreement that helps us get through this situation, we'll all be better for it. Because if the city is financially sound, we're going to be able to keep that budget kind of where it is, keep our services in place, keep our folks employed, and have that carry forward. I just don't want these kinds of actions to be the slow leak that sinks our ship. So, I'm sorry to have to do that. I certainly appreciate all of our employees and the union folks, and I've got a lot of respect for them. And I hope that we're able to have a contract come back that's something that we can support and still feel good about with our budget. Those are my comments. Anything else from the commission?
Commissioner Handley?
I would like to second what you said, where the same thing, Commissioner Mayor. I'm not opposed to 3% being the number that we're at. I would just like a shorter term on it for now. And who knows, maybe in three years, something magical happened, and we're in a better place, and we can give them more than that at that point. But I want us to know where we're standing, not be behind the game.
Commissioner Mayor?
Thank you, Your Honor, I'll be brief. Just want to clarify that, in no way meant to accuse any of my colleagues here of not being in favor of this solely for the money aspect of this. But, you know, coming from also a union family, several of us, you know, I remember growing up hearing, oh, we can't afford it right now, and that's why raises aren't happening. My mother worked at a hospital. My question is, what exactly are the alternatives that we, as the commission, can even do right now if we are not going to approve this? So we have a better understanding, moving forward, what those look like.
It's my understanding we can either approve the contract as it stands, or we turn it down, which sends the contract back to the negotiating team to come up with terms and bring it back to the commission again. Is that correct, City Manager? So we don't negotiate it here at this table? Yep. Any other comments from the commission?
Pro Tem Hill, do you have something?
Well, I just, I think, right, I have no problem with 3% either. It is absolutely, as I said, the question of timing. And as someone who paid 9% on her student loans, starting in 1988, yeah, things can go up and things can go down. So, I'm very aware that there, at the same time, there's a lot of concerns that the numbers that we're seeing on inflation relate to COVID and aren't based on the fundamentals of our economy. We can go out later and talk about the state of the economy. But what we're being asked to do tonight is vote on this contract. And in saying no, as was said, we give the teams the chance to renegotiate, given what we know now, as opposed to what we knew in June. And I'm making that, my vote on that basis.
All right, let's go ahead and take a vote. As a reminder, the motion on the floor is to approve. The contract is written. All in favor of that motion, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please say no.
No.
Motion fails two to five? Does that mean that the motion dies and we don't, we don't have to take a motion? Okay, just making sure that we're all cleaned up there. All right, we will send it back and revisit. Public comments? We now have our second section of public comment for the evening. Comments may not exceed three minutes per person. Please clearly state your name and physical address. Go ahead and approach the podium.
Margaret Brum, 404 East Magnetic Street, Marquette, Michigan. I'm going to do something I rarely do, which is praise each and every one of you. If you weren't relooking at fiscal matters now, based on the last three budget meetings, you're not doing your job. And the fact of the matter is, this was negotiated before we knew how bad it was, and now we know how bad it is. And I can tell you that as bad as it's going to be to renegotiate, you can't look anybody across the table in the eye and say, you are aware that last year was terrible. You are aware of what we're facing for the next year. You've invested a career in the city. Please invest some patience with us. We will work with you as much as we can, but we can't set a precedent. I was doing the math. I unilaterally took all your salaries away into a fund and said, okay, if everybody on the commission pledged their salaries to make up the difference, you couldn't pay for this one contract for five years, and there's four more to go. So, I mean, it's not that you're being insensitive to a union, it's that you're being fiscally prudent. You just dumped a lobbyist for $36,000. That couldn't even save half of this contract. And by the way, City Manager, my advice on that lobbyist is you put them to the proof. Tell them you're terminating the contract, but if they come up with a way that they can get us something, you'll listen to a proposal for a one-off deal. You'll listen to anything they have to say, because there's a lot of money coming from Washington that we like to get our hands on. And if they can come up with a measurable one-off proposal, you'll listen to them. But the fact of the matter is, they haven't proven themselves. They haven't been here, they haven't told people what they were doing, so that's why they got canned. I mean, I'm sorry, but if you don't let people know every day what you're doing, when the push comes to shove, you're going to lose. Now, I'm going to switch gears entirely, and my apologies if this is the bailiwick of parts and wreck. But as you know, I've been walking the streets of Marquette, picking up various pits of garbage. And the cigarette butts are getting better, for want of a better term. And I've had people contribute, and I'm looking at Commissioner Davis on that. There's a type of garbage I'm picking up now that's concerning me, because I've never seen it before, and it's on the island. And it's basically construction garbage. It's welding powder and electrical connections. And I found them in the road in two different places. And I've talked to the police department about this, and they're aware of the number of vehicles we have out there. They don't think it's the people from We Energies deconstructing the plant because they take another road out. But I'm asking everybody to be aware, if you see stuff falling off of any vehicle, to stop and get it out of the street, because what I picked up was welding powder, which is very dangerous. And the electrical connecting, I put, if a kid had picked that up and shoved it into the wall, it would have been disastrous. So I'm just asking people to be more aware of what they see on the ground and not just assume someone else will take care of it. And thank you for your work tonight.
Anyone else wishing to speak during public comment? Three minutes, name and physical address.
Jerry Rickman again, 607 Menard Street. I kind of floored tonight to see that you really want to extend a contract five years out. And even myself, seeing what's going on in the economy, I don't think half of you know what's going to be coming. There's a few of you that stood up and had the courage to say something, to stop that contract. And there's some of them are just, yeah, we'll just put it through. We got to do that. No, don't do that, because you guys really don't have the money. And what if some of these homes out there, people are losing their jobs? What if they can't make the monthly payment? You don't have no city tax coming in. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to address the commission? Public comment? Going once, going twice, public comment is now closed. That will now bring us to comments from the commission. We'll start things off with Commissioner Davis.
I can be real quick. I just want to thank the Superior Watershed for hosting the beach cleanup on Saturday. And I, you know, this organization has a strong, is a very strong partner with the city, and their work for the environment is very much appreciated.
Commissioner Handley?
All right, I don't have too much to say. I do want to thank Marquette Rotary West, actually, for the wonderful job they did with Harbor Fest this year. Even through the rain, you guys put on a beautiful thing, and it was wonderful. And seeing Bumpus come back to Marquette was always fantastic. The other thing I do want to say is to Sean, and I believe you're the one who does the union contract negotiations with other people. I look forward to seeing what you guys come up with, and I'm sure you guys will do a great job. And I want to let the unions know that we do support you, and we do support wage increases. I just really think we have to all be fiscal together, so, thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem Hill?
So, I want to thank my... Commissioners, I want to thank the staff for the thoughtful, hard work that we do to manage this, to manage the operations of this community. And that we are in a new time, and we are figuring it out together. And I appreciate that we have, it's a tough challenge in front of us. And what I do want to say is, I think, at the same time, there are new opportunities in front of us as well. There is going to be money coming from the feds that has not come before and what has passed the House, but not quite passed the Senate yet. So I think we want to be ready for what is going to come next that might not look like what has come in the past. I also want to say that one of the things, I was at an event today, one of the things that's different from COVID that's actually a good thing is that the townships and cities in Marquette County now meet once a week. And it's called the Superman Meeting, the Supervisor Manager Meeting. And I've heard again and again from folks how much they appreciate that, and that when we come together and work as a region, there's going to be the potential for even more money to come into our communities in ways that has not happened in the past. I can speak from direct personal experience that when you work together, I've done grants where, with five entities, where we got a quarter of a million dollars in coming together. We could not have done that on our own. And so all those, what those opportunities are and where they're coming from are still being identified. I know that groups are working hard to work through and figure out what those things could be. And that vision for a better future is what I'm very optimistic about going forward in these new times. I also want to say that coming up before our next meeting is the Marquette Art Awards out at Marquette Mountain this year. And it's going to be a big party, it's going to be a lot of fun. And thank also the folks that put that beautiful mural up on Ohio Street at Third. If you haven't had a chance to drive by, it's absolutely stunning. And that was done with the vision of the property owners, the arts, the Public Art Commission, and local artists who actually helped with the artists who had the vision for the whole project to put that together. And it was a wonderful event, and I wanted to thank them again. Thank you.
Right before I hand it off to Commissioner Mayor, I just wanted to say to Mayor Pro Tem, give her some props. The Superman Meeting, which she referenced, had been meeting, I think, quarterly prior, but it was actually Pro Tem Hill's idea to have that meet weekly once the height of COVID was really bearing down on us. So, I think that was a really positive result of COVID, as much as there have been a lot of negatives. All right, Commissioner Mayor, your turn.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just have one comment, kind of addressing the topic that came up with a gentleman from the public that just spoke a few minutes ago. You know, I think it takes courage to stand up for our employees and for working-class families that are dedicated to this city. And even knowing that the majority of my colleagues were not on the same page with me, proceeding forward anyways, because that's what I truly believed was the best thing to do, is not something I will apologize for. Thank you.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
I attended a ribbon-cutting today for the Training Center for the Carpenters and Millwrights. That's between here and the Gotti, left-hand side of the road, opposite the tractor farm. Fantastic facility, absolutely first-class. It is training people into the 21st century. Some of the training stations they were using, of course, virtual reality, really just punching the envelope and opening the way, I think, for a lot of kids, kids, a lot of young adults, to look for a career that, once you finish the training, you don't have a big debt behind you. They've been paying you during your training, and you're set up to do a, really, a family-sustaining wage. And it's a pleasure to be there, and certainly a pleasure to be a small part of that ribbon-cutting. Anybody that can figure out how to get a tour in there, I encourage you to do so, because it's very eye-opening. Great Harbor Fest. Kudos to the folks that make it all work in the Rotary, even though we had a little rain on Friday, it certainly worked out fine on Saturday. Great Bon Jovi Band, a lot of folks were there cheering and hooting and hollering and having a good night out. Blues Fest coming up this weekend. And certainly, that, I think, is a signature event for Marquette. And what that band is able, band, what that concert is able to produce in terms of really quality music for a city this size is remarkable. So I look forward to seeing everybody there. And thank you, Your Honor.
Commissioner Bonzel?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I just want to circle back to something that was mentioned earlier in the meeting, the glass recycling, and encourage folks to, you know, next week, first full business week of September, Monday through Friday, make sure you're putting your glass out and not other recyclables. And hopefully, we'll be able to continue making progress on that issue. And I don't think I have anything, anything else. I just, a general comment would be that I think it's important that we remember, moving forward, and I respect, you know, my colleagues' points of view and votes. And I think we had a really good discussion about the supervisor's labor agreement. But I think that it's important to remember that we talk about maintaining city services, and ultimately, those services are all provided by people. And our human resources are our most valuable resources in the city of Marquette. And it is possible for the quality of those human resources to decline if we don't invest in them too. Same as our roads would decline if we don't invest in our roads. So, I hope that we're able to negotiate a new agreement with that particular bargaining unit that's fiscally responsible while still respecting and acknowledging... unit that's fiscally responsible while still, you know, respecting and acknowledging the work that those employees do for our city and for the people of Marquette, and that we're able to do that for the other contracts we have coming up this year. Thank you.
I think my colleagues have pretty well covered it. The one thing I wanted to add that is that a lot of schools are starting either this week or next week, most of them starting on Wednesday, so I wanted to ask folks to pay special attention when you are approaching near school buildings, drive slow around school buses, when the lights are flashing, stop your car. Don't try to drive around, there's probably a kid walking out in the middle of the road. Just be really safe, and I wish everyone a happy start to the school year, and that includes all of our NMU college students, as I'm sure everyone has noticed, are starting to come back into town and attend classes. This, last week, I think, was their first week, so, including some of our own here on the commission. So just welcome back to school, and that's all I have. City Manager, comments?
I will just say that you guys really take your community events seriously. That Harbor Fest was a fantastic time. My kids enjoyed it, very much so, as did I. But something else that I take very seriously is the community office hours for City Manager. And that is coming up on September 8th at 10:00 a.m., it's a Wednesday, at the library. So please stop on by, say hi, let us know how we're doing, and it's a great, great opportunity to get to know me, but it's also a great opportunity to get to know all of you, so please feel free to swing by. And that is all. Thank you again for a great discussion tonight, and look forward to the next one.
I'm so glad to hear that those are restarting. It has been a long time.
I've heard that.
Thank you.
Yes, yes, thank you.
All right, we are adjourned at 7:27 p.m.